Okay, all right, welcome everybody to the town board work session Tuesday, May 1st, 2018. We start up with our tree conservation morris. So we had the public hearing last week.
Public hearings, I think that was not the first, was it?
No, but we did have a public hearing last week and
It's a continuation.
We, um, Jill distributed, we had two people speak and provide handouts and Jill distributed those to town board and we have Steve Coleman, environmentalist here, the environmental coordinator, and we're gonna talk about some of the comments.
So if the board recalls, we had comments from Cynthia Manacherian and also Victoria Alzepidi and some others.
I thought they raised some valid points that as Rob noted and probably as Nick would, although Nick was not here, that makes an issue between potentially property owners' rights and what you may like as a neighbor. And one of the examples was allowing three trees, up to three trees, to be taken. And then the question was, well, wait a second, what if it's right on the property line and it's one tree? Is that different than three trees forty feet that are not, you know, demarcating the property line? And then another issue that was raised was the idea or concept of different areas of Newcastle have different issues in terms of trees and how we deal with them and address those issues. So I think there are both valid concerns, so I'm happy to hear your thoughts on either of those.
As I explained at the meeting last week, you know, the notification process at that time when the ordinance was amended in 2011, you know, the town board at that time felt three, notifications should only occur for three trees or more. You know, because they felt that less than that was too much of a
Too restrictive for owners.
Too restrictive on the, you know, the homeowner, you know, in their, you know, balancing the rights of the homeowner versus, you know, the overpowering or
So jumping from, jumping from that, the question to you then Nick is whether it was one tree or 52 trees, what right would the town have to enforce that, this regulation on a private homeowner? Say, listen, if you're gonna have, because ultimately as a private owner, I have a right to do what I want on the property, so.
Got to tie it back to a legitimate public cell, public safety and health concern.
So is there, is there a means or in your experience by which a homeowner, and I don't know if everyone will agree or disagree, but a homeowner who wants to take down a tree, it's not so much the number of trees, but the location of the tree. So again, if it's
In the front yard versus the back.
Right, or just blocking the property, so I have a pool, I have a back porch, now this tree has been chopped down and now it's exposed.
But in my experience, I mean, most people have a very legitimate reason for wanting to remove the trees. And in, I would say probably eighty percent of the cases, it's a tree that has, is in a state of decline or safety issues. There's a reason they're taking it down, so even if you were trying to maintain, you know, a screening between the two, from a safety standpoint, the tree would still be coming down.
So that, that may be true, but my
Yeah, so that's, that's one aspect, but I mean, most of what I review are, you know, applications for trees that have, you know, some kind of structural defect that they're no longer considered safe.
And the bigger question probably is how many you don't review, not because of, not because of, not from your lack of work, I mean, it just happened.
But don't you think generally, if there's a tree that's screening, if we live next to each other, the screen, the tree's screening my property, it's screening yours as well. If I'm gonna take that down, I don't necessarily wanna see your pool or your house. So if I'm taking it down, it's because, I, I'm, this is a generalization, but because there's either a safety concern or the tree is down or whatever.
Or because the tree's dropping too many leaves in your swimming pool.
Right, then it doesn't become orders, but then, then it's not, then it's not orders because
Then that, that's your right to do that.
Then you put down, then you put down a, an evergreen and you don't worry about it.
But that's, but that's your right to do that. If I have a tree, if I put it in a pool and I have a couple of trees that are providing too much shade to my pool and I wanna take them down, I should have the right to take it down. Now, by the way, that may sound, that, let me finish, that may sound like I'm cold hearted, but to be honest with you, I actually, I actually did that.
Doesn't have anything with that.
And yet, I was more concerned with my neighbors than anything. But at the same time, as a town board who's setting the regular laws, I think we have to be concerned about property rights. And if I have a tree that I wanna take down on my property, I should have the right to do that.
So my question is to you, Rob, and back to
One important aspect too is there's, within the code, there is a provision too for tree replacement. You know, so if a tree is considered in fair condition or better, you know, the homeowner is subject to replacement.
But that may be true, it's more, again, it's more
So even though you may be losing a tree, it will be replaced.
Again, it's more of a notice issue in my, in my view.
Right, it's more of a notice. It's more of a notice.
Right, I'm not saying you can or you can't, it's more of a notice issue. So the neighbor at least can be heard, maybe take the steps, whatever he or she may wanna do on his or her property. And proactively, so, you know, going back to what Rob said moments ago, I completely, I completely understand and respect what you're saying. But what is the difference between two trees, three trees, four trees that requiring a notice requirement, wherever they are on the property, and one tree that's within ten feet of a property line over a certain size?
Well, can I just, can I just augment this conversation with something on a little bit more of a practical level? Which is very often what ends up happening is somebody buys a piece of property and, um, the property was built in nineteen seventy, the property was built in nineteen fifty, the property was built in nineteen ninety, whatever it happens to be. But typically, what ends up happening is the little tree that you planted like in nineteen fifty is now some enormous thing, you know, circa 2010. And so the original design intent of that tree or screening intent of that tree has now passed its useful life. So I was just wondering, and I'm talking now on people who are closer together. And that tree, and Steve is right, that tree's coming down anyways. But is there something within the, what you call, public safety and health?
The police powers is what's coming up.
But is there something about sort of passive enjoyment when it's on the borderline? That it's a right that both property owners on either side?
No, nothing's possible, no.
You know, one, one thing I wanna share just because of my experiences in multiple instances. I will go out and review an application and find, you know, somebody else who takes a couple of trees that are in the buffer between two individual properties. And the neighbor next door has lawn right to the edge of their property line.
So they rely on that buffer.
They rely upon their neighbor to provide all of the buffer in terms of vegetation. You know, so I always struggle with that because I feel to be fair, you know, both parties should be contributing to that screening. You know, and that's where a lot of the disputes come in. You know, we've had an appeal this past year with that specific case in mind. Is that a neighbor was providing all the screening, you know, and the other neighbor appealed because they didn't like it. You know, and, you know, and to me, it's a fairness issue and it's not really addressed in the code, but I just threw that out there because that's a lot of times what I deal with. And homeowners that are taking the trees, they don't wanna, a lot of cases also, they don't talk to their neighbors. I mean, you may think we're a friendly community, but that's not my experience. When you go to neighbors, they say, well, we have to talk to our attorney, you know, I mean, there's a lot of
So on the, on this point, just picking up on Jeremy's comment about noticing, there's also a set of comments that came from Cynthia Manacherian, I think, that are about providing notice back to the adjacent property owners when a positive determination has been made by you that the applicant can remove the trees. And so, you know, can we institute a process whereby we're notifying, you know, notifying that neighbor who was relying on the, the shade from their, their neighbor's trees, that you've said, yes, those trees can come down? Because her point, and I think it's a really valid point, is that she's got a window there, or anyone in the community has a window there of ten days where they have to appeal. But they don't know unless they're constantly calling the town and say, hey, did you make a determination about that yet? So can we, can we implement some sort of, you know, process whereby we're
It's, it's an interesting concept, I, you know, I would say could be consistent. We should probably do that for all type of applications. We don't do that for the building permit, zoning, planning, any other codes. I mean, it's a notification, it's not in the beginning, but it's
Right.
If you're interested, it's up to you.
But let me ask you a question, even if they did appeal?
It's a person that's interested, you know, but, I mean, I've, most homeowners complain when they gotta do certified mail. And you're gonna ask them to do it again, you know, a week later.
So they get notice, they get notice on the top one.
But even if they did appeal?
Pardon me?
Are we ever gonna say, no, you can't take a tree down? If somebody does appeal and say, no, I like that tree, are we gonna tell a property owner they can't take their tree down because their neighbor likes it?
Well, because you're appealing to a separate, you're appealing to a separate boards. You're appealing to the ERB as opposed to appealing to Steve directly, so you're getting a second judgment.
But it's still their own property. I think where it comes down to it, if they wanna take down the tree, they can take down their tree.
Well, that's, well, that's a draw, I wonder what happened.
It doesn't mean they don't have to put, either replace a tree or put money into a tree fund.
Right.
That's different. They may need to do that, but if you wanna take down a tree on your property, you're allowed to take down a tree.
Well, no, I mean, you'd be subject to the fines that are outlawed and that are described in this legislation.
Not by the basis of that it's second, it's not. And that's an easy example.
Well, it's multiple trees.
I mean, my concern is just consistency. If we're gonna require it for the tree, I think we need to look at the bigger picture. Are we doing that for all types of applications?
Well, maybe we should be.
I mean, it's just, you know.
Well, isn't that awfully onerous?
I mean, that's a
Somebody, if somebody's, if somebody's interested, you give notice, they're interested, and like Nick said, it's their responsibility to follow it. Why should we have to spoon feed everybody?
I mean, that's, that's what seeker, seeker is based on, that is a notification of things.
But this is a different type of decision. I mean, a lot of the stuff like building permits and variances.
Well, but it varies.
It's, well, like, they're public meetings, it's noticed on agendas, the decision resolution is made public in a packet.
Building permits are though.
Building permits are, steep subpermits, building grading.
But, but normally, the building permits within the, as of right, as it exists within the town code right now, if it's not made public, if it's, if it's something that's larger than the existing as of right, it's a public process.
Okay, but you're then a tree.
Whereas the tree, taking the one thing, a tree and absolutely with notice?
No, and that's Exactly.
But not a tree, I thought it was three, you were talking about.
No, but there's some people who aren't, some people who aren't a tree.
That's what the law is right now.
Two on an a tree.
That's the current code, they recommend it.
But my, what I was suggesting was a tree within a certain distance of your property line.
And by, by the way, you know, you talk about people aren't always good neighbors. I mean, the truth is, if, if we require people to give their neighbors notice every time they take down a tree.
But it's not a tree, but that's not exactly, I
I know, but some people are suggesting it's a tree.
I don't think that's on the table for any of us.
But the point is, what we're doing also is, it's nice to give your neighbors notice, but you're also, you're, you're setting them up for controversy too. Because you're essentially saying like, you know, I need your permission to take down this tree. And, and then it all of a sudden, you're creating a controversy with your neighbor. There's other, people, a lot of people, I mean, if you're taking down a tree, I think most people in this room probably, if you're taking down a tree that you know is providing some sort of benefit to your neighborhood, you're gonna talk to them in advance because they're your neighbor.
They don't, I mean, you know, they don't, they don't.
I can tell I experienced with not remotely, not remotely.
I do.
You would, you would, but not everybody does.
I understand that, but the point is by requiring notice for every single tree.
But that's what the sets, it doesn't say requiring notice for every tree. It's requiring notice for any of the trees for which you would have to seek permit to remove the tree in the first place. It's not any tree that you're taking down as of right, which is a good number of trees. You only have to get a permit to take down a tree that has a diameter of over eight inches.
Oh, no, no, it's fine.
Right?
I think the comment was any tree.
Which is tiny, or if it's within the buffer zone.
So I don't think it's a
And it's four inches, and it said it's tiny.
But I don't think it's a
Well, they're, they're recommended.
Yeah, her comment.
Yeah, that's a tiny tree, it's a sapling.
Her comment was any tree.
They wanted to not get rid of the definition of four inches for a tree and have any tree, you know, start there regardless of size.
No, wait, I mean, we don't
I, of course.
You wouldn't even notice a four inch tree being taken down.
And it wasn't even that, it was also like, any tree, and then if a bird happens to live in it or if it's part of a
No, that's, that's not, but, you know, there's one, another thing I wanted to raise with you, Steve, that I
With my experience is that, is the notification of course, people seem to accept that. And, you know, it's done and, you know, and I don't really get a lot of negative feedback from that. I mean, you know, it's done, I think people appreciate it, you know. There's rare instances where, you know, a neighbor gets upset, but, you know, in most cases, it seems to be working.
So it hasn't really been an issue that a neighbor, that there's been a positive determination and then the neighbor didn't?
Other than a couple isolated instances where, where neighbors are already at odds with each other, you know, and if they have legal issues between them is where, you know, there's been problems.
Yep, there was, yes.
Nick, Nick, do you have?
Switching, switching gears for just a second, there's, there was something else I wanted to raise with you, which is that I, I, I keep coming back to this because I think it keeps flipping, um, the definition of what constitutes a clearing. Um, and so in the latest version, we've taken out the reference to a quarter acre, which I think is a mistake because, you know, then we start to get into the issues that Hala was raising and others have raised about the size of the property matters. And so if you're taking down ten trees over seven acres versus if you're taking down ten trees over a quarter acre, and I think that that's a really important distinction because ten trees in a quarter acre does in my mind constitute a clearing versus ten trees spread out even over two acres, uh, it doesn't, it doesn't have the same, the same effect.
But, but I think Cynthia's point was, I honestly, I, I think her point technically could backfire. I think her point was that if you have a forest, let's say twenty acres, unless you, and you take down one tree, it actually affects the whole forest and therefore there should be different rules for the twenty acres because you're affecting the whole forest.
Wait, no, 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 I, I can't imagine she could possibly ever have said that, um.
Oh, she actually did, she said that.
But what, what, what I have a, I have a different, what I have an issue with is, and it doesn't affect a lot of property, but as you know, there's large lots. And the DEC defines large lots as seven acres or more, in particular if they're forested. Or they call it woodlot.
Yeah, and there's to be fifty acres to qualify for.
No, no, to qualify for money, but in terms of who they target, because I was a targeted person, as somebody who needs to be educated in forest management or at least woodlot management, are people with seven acres and one. And they do this because there's a whole lot of people who have that connected together and then ultimately creates a, a corridor of some sort. So my feeling is, is that, um, you know, I have a piece of property where everything grew at a certain period in time, so everything is of a certain age. And stuff is starting to go into decline, right? So it has got a couple of ways to come down. One is I can manage it to encourage new growth so that I can have it. Another one is I can just let them fall because I'm not gonna come to you and pay any kind of money to replace the amount of diameter, that would be the right thing to do. And the right thing to do probably would be to work with somebody to actually come up with a plan to improve the overall forest health, right? And my question is, within our tree law, do we allow for, um, what I'm gonna call in sort of environmental improvements without having to contribute to the tree bank?
We don't have a legal mechanism to do that.
Well, that's why we have, we have the law.
Yeah, but, but what I can say is there have been a couple of individuals that have had, you know, ten, fifteen acres that wanted to manage their forests to make it, improve it. So they've taken down trees and then through the tree replacement, we've worked with them to make sure they do the right type of trees to improve the forest ecology and, you know, meet their objectives.
Right, so for example, the DEC, one of the things when I talked to the DEC and I sent the email about it is they would be willing to assign us a forester who's familiar with what they're willing to do and then come up with an overall plan that would improve the health. And that, in that plan, should I remove, like, you may wanna keep a big huge oak that becomes parent oak for the subsequent generation. You may wanna clear underneath it to allow the saplings to come up. I mean, and you may wanna get rid of invasive species, you know, which may be over four inches in diameter or eight inches in diameter, like locusts. Or you may wanna take out some of the beech that's taking over a certain part of the forest and basically using the poison coming out of their roots to annihilate any other competitive, um, species, right? So my feeling is, is that there should probably, and it's not gonna apply to a lot of people, but there are gonna be people where the right thing for them to do is actually the opposite of what the tree law encourages.
Well, I'm not sure I would agree with that completely because, I mean, the code is based on the zoning district.
But, but the zoning maximum zoning district is B two.
It's two acres.
Right, so when you set to acres, it's irrelevant.
If you have an oversized lot, even if you're taking, but still, if you're, the process is the same no matter what size acre, you know, land that you own, whether it's in a one acre district and you have ten acres in the one acre district, that piece applies.
But I, but I don't think that should apply.
But looking a different way. There is a, there is a provision in here that's about forest management activities.
I mean, as far as management, you can apply to the city.
So you're, you're permitted as of right, forest management activities on a property assessed under section 480A of the real property tax law for which certificate of approval by the New York State DEC is on file with the town. I mean, basically
But what is that real property 480A?
Well, you have to look at the regulations, but, and, and my understanding is you'd have to have a certain sized property to qualify for.
The, the level of those trees doesn't require a
It's fifty acres, it's fifty acres, that is not, well, it's fifty acres. Because what happens at fifty acres, you, you have to have fifty contiguous acres. So I mean, in theory, I could form a corporation with my neighbor and the two of us could get together and create a corporation, but that's not practical. Because it's binding, should you ever want to sell?
Twenty one fourth.
It is, it's fifty acres.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's
As a woodlot management, that's, that's, that's the law. Believe me, I already thought about all of this.
Section 480A.
And so my feeling is that
Yeah.
But I think, yeah, to your point
And so for, for somebody like me on steep slopes.
However, to your point, the rest of the language in here, I think addresses your concerns because it says other, other New York State DEC approved forest management or stewardship program. So if a homeowner came to us and said, I wanna manage and I'm working with New York State's DEC forester,
But I, but I think that they should be exempted out of having to
You may be exempted. Well, this does exempt you, it's an activity permitted by right.
Can you read that to me? I can't read that.
I mean, we would need to see what kind of plan it is and see how, you know, if it meets the criteria, you would be exempt, you know, from it.
Well, I think we should, I, I will take a closer look. Because I don't think you wanna necessarily exempt the property as of right as opposed to, um, exempting foresting activities.
You're right. You're right.
Because someone could decide they have a twenty acre property and they wanna just fell it all
Fifty acres.
because they wanna, they don't like trees or whatever, so, you know, for your example is, is, makes sense,
You know, you're targeting a tree.
but for someone else who had more family purposes, it wouldn't.
Right.
So I like saying for foresting management or stewardship, right?
Yeah, we're more controlled.
So just look at us.
Yeah.
That's okay, I don't think I'd exempt a property just because of its size.
Fair, as long as they're part of the program, that makes sense, yeah.
Right.
Then here eligible tracks.
Yes, I think our provision really does make it broad enough and that's, that's been in our code since its inception, you know, so.
Cause I just, I just know that, I mean, I have now a huge tree that just came across the entire pond that I'm gonna have to remove. I mean, it's like
It's a tract of forest land of at least fifteen acres, which was planted with an average of
Is it fifteen or fifty?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
But it has to be a, a land of fifteen acres, so does my area immediately surrounding the housing count? Probably not. And there's also like the whole topography issue of like steep slopes and bedrock and like lord knows what.
There's lots of regulations, I mean, we, you know, we have a lot of regulations on the books that, you know, protect property.
No, I'm talking, it's easy.
Well, then, I'm just talking about an oak tree scroll like there.
Maybe that's what the section should be.
So there's a couple of other things that got added in, I feel like, um, as a result of the conversations last week and I'm not, I'm not sure if they work from my, from my
But can, before we go on to that question, can I just hear their, their legal, uh
Well, no, so there's actually a section 480 dash A, taxation of forest lands, which is fifty acres, and 480, forested and reforested lands, which is fifteen acres.
Of, of tract of fifty acres.
So maybe we should change it to, let's 480, yeah, 480 dash.
We should ditch the A.
Yeah.
Just do 480.
Or even just specify, cause I think it's, that, that is basically, come up with a, can you do a legal, a legal language which is something like, uh, primarily, you know, forested so that, for example, if you've got a lawn or something, you're not like, all of a sudden exempt. You don't have to have every acre.
Well, I think, I think you just gotta qualify with the DEC standards and then you're fine.
Why do you even drop it to seven?
Well, we can't do that, cause that's, I mean, if we're, you'd have to do
It's a DEC program and it's fifteen acres.
The DEC program, we don't have to go with that, otherwise, great.
Well, I think, I just know that, I'll, I'll, I'll send an email to the DEC cause I think they were targeting people with seven acres or more because they thought
They may be targeted, they don't currently have the common code.
So another thing that got added in, and I, I don't know Nick, if this works from a legal perspective, but we added, uh
Or section.
Did you wanna go back and just confirm number?
Yeah, we didn't go back on clearing.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Can we just do, get an answer on clearing? So, um, so Ivy's point was clearing removal of ten trees or more and leaving in, in a quarter acre area on any lot. Do you have an issue with leaving in that quarter acre?
One of the challenges I have is how do you determine a quarter acre? You know, you, I mean, you have to almost survey it to see if
But you got a lot in the assessor's office.
No, but I mean, it's, you know, if somebody has a two acre zone, it works, you know.
Quarter acre's tiny.
But, but, but if someone has an eight acre property and you now figure out that quarter acre tract where they have removed ten or more trees, it's a moving quarter acre, right? It's a rolling quarter acre.
Okay, what, right, you mean more like a quarter acre zoned lot?
The way I always
No, no, that's not what I mean at all. Uh, what I mean, it, the way that this gets used from a practical standpoint, right? Is that this tells you when you have to apply for the permit. So anytime you're going to have a clearing, you, your, a permit is required. And so from my mind, that's not ten trees across two acres, that's ten trees in a quarter acre area.
Uh, yeah, see, I've always, I've always, I mean, to me, it's, what I've seen in practice is it's ten or more trees no matter where it is on the property, is what triggers a clearing action.
Which is broader.
It's broader, and it picks up, catches more.
It's broader.
But, but I think there needs to be a cap on the size of the lot.
And, and I think it has more of an impact, I mean, if, if you do it in a quarter acre area, that may mean, I mean, there's still gonna
If you're doing it in a corner of your property, you take down ten trees.
That's what she's saying, seriously.
Any tree they're taking down, you're still gonna have to show.
But within the size, if you take ten trees off my property, you wouldn't even notice it. Right, even if you take ten trees within a quarter acre area on a fifteen acre property, you're not gonna necessarily notice it.
Oh, you would notice ten trees on a quarter acre, quarter acre's only
I'd like the language to just ten or more irrespective of the size.
I, 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 I don't, I don't.
So it covers everything.
I, I don't, because again, if you're taking ten trees out of ten acres, you're never gonna notice that the trees gone.
How many, how many property owners have
It's, it's
I, there's one sitting right here.
It's still carrying, it could be a detrimental deer or whatever else.
It's like, not that many.
Right, not that many.
I mean, I've, I've found that kind of law that can be easier to communicate for people.
Right, so with the, the, the comments that we got from Victoria Alzepidi and her list of books who signed on to that,
I don't know what direction it is.
Was to keep the quarter acre, um, but to drop the number from ten to six.
Yeah, but, I don't
I just, to me, a clearing means you've cleared land.
I don't understand the basis of that.
There's a big open space now because land has been cleared.
Yeah, that was simple.
Ten trees over two acres, I mean, we may wanna regulate that, but that don't, to me, doesn't fit the definition of what a clearing is.
Well, I think, you know, I don't wanna be controversial, but I do think their letter, part of their letter was to prevent certain developments. And I think that's part of the reason, reason they had, you know, if habitat use it. I mean, that, these are arguments we've heard from some of these same people over and over again with, like, the development that I mentioned. That's off a gallery at the school on property. They don't want that cleared because that's possibly a coyote habitat. I mean, that, that would essentially be used to stop development, which I don't think is necessarily what our goal here is with this tree law is.
I could just need a permit, right?
But even, if, but yeah, right, even, even if, this isn't stopping the law, it, it's just requiring, it's just triggering, telling all
It's subject to a permit, then you don't carry
Permit.
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's raising, it's raising different obstacles.
Does the permit cost anything?
It's, it's thirty dollars for the first three trees and then ten dollars per tree.
So we still need guidance for that on clearing, keep as is, modify it?
So what you're saying is if it's a drastic change, so there's a, a density reduction of some proportion within a specific space, that should trigger permit? Not if you've got a large property with a whole bunch of trees and you're just sort of taking them down and you're actually probably making forest out, out there.
There's still, if you're taking trees of a certain diameter, you're still gonna have to apply for the permit anyway. We're talking about trees, like, spread out over your entire property that are less than eight inches in diameter.
Well, but then
Otherwise, if there were more to that, you'd have to apply for the permit anyway.
If they, well, they'd have to be eight inches or larger.
Right, right.
Do you think there's a way that we could also maybe send this legislation to the DEC for their comment? To see if there's any ways that they could improve it?
There's comments that in the past, they didn't have any comments back in 2011, other than what you had submitted.
Right, but I
I mean, they, they don't have jurisdiction over this, this
No, I know, they don't have jurisdiction.
And we made the conscious decision to take it out at some point.
Yes.
I'm curious what led to that.
Probably his suggestion.
So then, so then what about, what about the, what about Black, then saying zone for half acres, again, kinda what you're saying, six? Zone for three, full acre, ten, anything, eight, anything above full acre, ten?
That you can measure easier, right?
Just think we need to get out of this two acre zoning, the maximum zoning, and this town is two acres.
But I guess, what, what are we getting after by, I mean
It needs to be tied to a lot size.
Trigger, I mean, there's still gonna be something to replacement, there's still gonna be
It does, it should be tied to lot size. Well, that's the same
So what result?
I think it's on the, that's on the property law.
Yeah, so more than three, you need a permit anyway?
Like, what, no, no, you need it.
No, no, no. More than three, you have to notice.
I mean, we've, we've always had ten, I mean, I don't know whether we reduce it from ten to six is gonna make that significant a difference, you know, in terms of the number, you know. I mean, most of the applications we get are for, you know, one to three trees that, you know, that people take down, you know, at a time. I mean, it's not that often you get that many clearing actions. It's more related to subdivisions or, you know, bigger, bigger projects and
Firehouse.
Yeah, you know, and then the quarter acre, I mean, we're gonna pick it up no matter what, where they are on the property. You know, it's, it's a regularly tree, it's subject to a permit. I mean, the only impact from a clearing action is if they're clearing all in one area, you know, it can have a potential impact, but then you know, if we look at that, we're gonna also want to see, you know, new screening put in, replacement, I mean, there'd be things to address and that. It's just a question of. I mean, I I can leave it, it's just addressing the quarter acre, I can see how people would purposely clear only, you know, wanna take eight trees and to avoid the quarter acre thing and, you know. I mean, there's ways you could manipulate.
Or somebody may have got a far, a backyard that's grown into a forest and they want to have lawn again.
Yeah. And that, that's when I've had clearing actions, it's usually for, you know, creating some yard space for kids to play.
Exactly.
I think college point also, which is a good point, I mean, the truth is you you grow a tree for screening and then all of a sudden it grows to be forty feet high, it's it's not, maybe nice to look at and serve a different purpose, but it's not for screening anymore.
It's not.
Yeah.
You know.
I mean, we can put it back and see how it goes. It's just, my only concern is identifying, you know, the quarter acre. I mean, if it's ten trees automatically, to me, it's sort of, you know, it's looked scrutinized a little more carefully anyway, you know, but it may not be addressing the, you know, clearing of a spot area, you know, where all the trees are taken out, like if somebody's putting a tennis court in, you know, or something, that's where that would come into play.
I mean, look, I I.
You know, so.
You're you're the expert. If this is, if I'm raising an issue that's not really something that you see, that's.
Yeah. Yeah, it it had been, it had been a quarter acre, you know, up until, you know, now and
Good feedback.
frankly, I I've never really had the issue come up, you know, that hasn't been addressed by, you know, somebody, if somebody's putting a sport quarter in or something that needed planning or zoning, so we we got landscaping, we got, you know, buffering and everything else to, you know, to balance it out.
Yeah. Yeah.
So let's go back to me for a second. Um, so hoping to finish twelve months or a calendar year.
Well, what I specifically, you're letting large lot over.
No, Holla, you gotta leave at ten.
Yeah, I know, I have to leave at ten. So let me go back. So now if I come in with a D E C, I come on with a forest forest stewardship plan.
If you meet the criteria in here, you're in S A P S.
Well, yeah, I'm exempt from paying any money, cause it's gonna cost a fortune to do that. Okay.
No, you're exempt from the tree owners.
The second question I have, that's good. That's that's what I went on. There was another question I had, but I.
Thought you may have steep slope and wetlands and other issues.
Oh, no, but taking a tree down, I'm not talking about developing, I'm talking about health.
Yeah, but I mean, if you meet that criteria, you would be exempt according to this.
We're gonna keep, we're gonna keep it, yeah.
Cause I gotta tell her, managing that property.
Say we're gonna be in S A P.
And I think twelve months.
We'll take, we'll take out the quarter acre.
So just say, the other issue I have is the calendar year versus twelve months. It's a lot easier in our systems and that to work on.
Okay. To twelve months.
A twelve month period, not to carry it over into multiple years.
Yeah, no, 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 it makes sense, okay.
Uh, we added in, okay, just after, after last week, we added in to the law in section.
We're leaving it.
Not a calendar year.
In section one twenty one three, letter B, Nick, we added this, this sentence that says, property owners should contact the environmental coordinator of the town or Newcastle before cutting down any trees
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
to help determine if a tree removal permit is required. I I agree with that, but does that belong in legislation? Should, should, thank you, okay. I'm not a lawyer, but I was like, should?
Let's make it a little bit. Right, should mean, should means, what does should mean? Should means, should means this, do what you want. Shall is different.
Right.
Right.
We'll start with S H. Yep, so B changes here.
Uh, no, 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 I think, I think the problem was is that, no, 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 no.
It's like I'm not the ball problem here, thank you.
That's why parents made a lot of money for law school.
Well, it's not in that same school. Can I just tell you, we intentionally put should in there because the shall was too onerous.
Right, shall, right, shall, shall is.
Yes, but the but the should is ambiguous.
Should means nothing. Other than saying, other than saying, listen, if you're actually reading it and making effort, you say, okay, should I?
Well, somebody, they, the the board wanted it to remain, but does not want to make it a requirement because it would be too.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's really at the end of the day, it's here, here, there.
So then take it out.
It means, okay, all right. If you're okay with that, it's.
Take it out.
I mean, this doesn't mean anything. It's just, it's just giving it a little pat on the back to do something.
Well.
Right, this was just put in there because it was.
Okay.
Peachton.
So the other thing that, sorry.
Uh, one twenty one dash three.
It's six, so I would take it out. Yeah.
B is now out.
I don't care if it's in or out, it doesn't mean anything.
I I.
Leave it, then take it out.
Is that a tractor work, check, can you talk to them?
It's comfortable leaving it in there. I just don't, it doesn't have any teeth.
Yeah. Right, well, I think it's just a message saying you should really do something, but.
Right.
No, then why don't you, why don't we word it like that, where it's not, you should, it could be something like.
The town encourages.
Exactly, right, something like that. Really, really, you strongly encourage.
Really encourages. Please.
With all due respect, we strongly encourage. So at least you're, at least you're saying what it, what it is, it's basically.
Very.
It's just, they just know that it does not really have any. But saying should gives it, gives the impression that four years from now, we're gonna argue over whether it's enforceable.
Whether that means, whether, you know, well, call it and call and Steve and he will, cause it says she should call him.
I agree.
And now he has to, she has to come.
Um, and then we also added in this thing about taking pictures of the dead trees that we've removed. How does that work from a practical standpoint?
Well, I struggle with that too. I mean.
Which one is that in?
It's uh, one twenty one four B.
I was about that last time.
On what page?
It's kind of eight six.
Well, we thought it was easy to be honest with you.
It's.
I I think it's easy. At this day and age, everyone's got this.
Yeah.
Yeah, just have an easy email address, tree at mynewcastle.org. Take a picture. Take a picture.
So, okay, so I want to take down a dead tree on my property, which is my right to do.
Right.
And before I go to take it down, I'm gonna take pictures of the tree.
No, but it's not necessarily.
Well, here's the problem, here's the problem. I had someone on my street who took down a beautiful, beautiful tree. There was zero reason that tree should have come down. Not that I'm an expert, but certainly from an outside looking view, so what's stopping if he gets caught?
And they claimed it was a dead tree.
They lack better term to say, oh, yeah, you know what, I didn't take a tree down, I didn't have the right permit, it was a specimen tree, but it was sick. Well, now they can say, oh, look, look, I have a picture.
It could have been, but it could have been sick, it could have been sick.
You could, a healthy tree can look dead and a dead tree can look healthy. I mean, what's the?
I I struggle with that provision because there's, there's instances where people take advantage of that, you know, and say, well, it was dead and I had a friend who was an arborist look at it
That's how long it's been.
and I have no way of knowing, you know, in most cases unless, you know, it's pretty clear when you go out and do an inspection, but I think the thought of documentation would help in some cases. You know, it's not gonna show everything, but it will show some of the, you know, the major structural issues that, you know, you're usually gonna be concerned about.
They keep you feel a little more honest. And and we see the same tree picture over and over and over again, we'll know, hey, that guy was the same tree. That's right, I know that.
It becomes a B with the dead tree.
Why is that Google images? Yeah, exactly. So we keeping the language in one twenty one four B? I I think so.
All right.
It's your call. Is that actually a square? I wonder if you can put an image on Google that tells you that image.
I think it's, first of all, if you can take a picture, are they gonna email it to Steve?
Yeah, yeah. But no, at least they have it and then if they.
No, I mean, really, sure, they're gonna.
No, yes, yes, they have to email it to Steve within seventy two hours of the removal.
I mean, this is ridiculous, it's never, it's never gonna happen. It's like, it's, it's never gonna happen.
Okay.
It's never, in a million years, gonna happen.
I I vote keep it. That's one, yes.
I mean, what I do, a lot of people will call.
You're stating, that's a no.
I'll go with this, I'll go with the majority.
No, all right, so I got two, I got two.
I'm gonna vote to keep it, I think.
Oh, boy.
Three. Sorry.
I mean, I don't, I don't, you know, I don't really care either. It just sort of, from a practical perspective, I didn't, I didn't get how it's worked.
Enough with having me vote to an elected, please help me here.
It's ridiculous, it's never gonna happen, ever.
Okay, then we'll take it.
So we're gonna, you're a shall or a may?
I I posted my, this is B, this is twenty one four.
Comment myself, why would I do that?
But I'm, I'm gonna change, first of all, I don't think I ever voted, but I would say, why don't we just leave, it technically could be two, two, I mean, cause I technically didn't vote. Jeremy's counting me as a, as I don't care, as a yes.
You need to do it to cover your eyes. That's why you would do it.
But it's a majority, that's right, you have to do it every, every once. But uh, I would say Steve should decide.
Well, I I'd probably be more comfortably may require instead of shall require, you know, verification and phone.
Right, so you pay, you pay, did you show them what?
It's your challenge.
Yeah, but if a person calls, I I do get calls from people saying, you know, I think my tree is dead or, you know, you know, and then I can say, well, send me a picture, I can take a look at it. If I'm real concerned about it.
That's fair, that's fair.
I can go out and look at it and say, well, could you wait, let me come out and look at it, you know, before you make that notification.
Just out of curiosity, just going back to old infrastructure again, what happens when a tree potentially is interfering with things like septic systems and wells and so on and forth, are they exempt?
Then ask.
Well, what if it falls at Kellerman College?
Yes.
They're, they're, in some cases, they're exempt, you know, depends on, it's a bit of a.
So what does the language say about that?
Well, isn't that health and safety?
It doesn't address that, other than health and safety or.
So that's exempt if it's health and safety?
It's racing condition, yeah. Well, if it's a dead tree hazardous or other, uh, knowing emergency.
Beats a, a general or ongoing emergency. That would be if it's affecting your.
That's, that would affect your septic system or your water.
Well, absolutely.
So I I, moving on to more comments we got from last week, apparently we got a comment requesting that if any, if any public utility
Oh, okay, yeah, I think so.
brought down trees, that they would provide.
I think the reality is we're just, we're preemptive, we're just, the bottom line is preemptive, yeah.
Yeah, we're. Yeah, so so we, they wanted them to file for permits, we can't do that. Is it possible for us to ask for them to provide us notification, to provide the neighbors notification?
We examined it.
Well, they do. I mean, kind of when they do their line work, most, most of the trees that they take out, they're either on private property
They should.
Yep.
or they're in the town right away. And because they have, you know, their, their ability to do it without any permits, they ask our permission, I look at the trees, you know, that are questionable, they take down, but they're getting permission from the private homeowners and they, you know, they do a notification.
Do they, they don't need permission?
It's, it's not, no, 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 it's, it was, it was a very controversial issue and I think Cynthia Manituri is still talking about the West.
Yeah, it's alright.
Well, but that was a specific storm hardening project that, on it.
But there was no notification to this, there was absolutely no notification and people went around and started tacking up signs, do not take this tree, stay.
They should have notified us.
So can we build into the law?
To be, to be honest.
And not only that, Con Ed was even worse than that. Con Ed went to the neighbors and said, if this tree comes down, you can't be sued. That was like threatening them with all sorts of stuff.
Con Ed?
We're preemptive regulating, we can't. It's a good one of should, yes.
It was, it was not a, not a good.
Well, this might be an important should to put in, cause I think a lot of people do care about this.
Yeah, but I, but I have a different perspective because I work with the Con Ed people and, and I'm in Glendale in that area.
Yeah. Yeah.
They got permission from most of those homeowners to take the trees down. They explained the storm hardening project.
Most. Or.
It was a federal mandate that they had the funding for X period, they had to pick a road that had chronic outages, they chose that area, they should have notified the town and kept this more in the loop. They didn't, but, but they got, they followed their normal procedure and a lot of those homeowners.
But the normal procedure wasn't acceptable and then when they went in again.
Well, it wasn't acceptable to a few individuals, but a lot of those homeowners say yes.
A few?
Well, the thing is, I think, I mean.
Way more than a few.
I went, I went to the uh, the massacre over at uh, the 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 firehouse over there where Ja- jail actually got
Firehouse, station two.
attacked even though she was the one who set up the meeting and brought Con Ed in and whatever, but, and most of the residents weren't even Newcastle residents, but putting that aside, I think, I think at that point, there's a big consensus that the problem was, first of all, they left a million stumps, that was a big mistake. People came home and it was twenty stumps in a row and they weren't even stumps, they were like the size of like five feet, right, exactly.
They weren't stumps, they were like five, eight feet tall.
Yeah, they weren't done yet, yeah.
But the second, the other problem was, I think people weren't, didn't realize the scope of it. So they may have got permission for each and every tree, what they didn't realize that two hundred trees were coming down.
Right.
And if they did realize that two hundred trees were coming down, individuals might have said, you know, this is too big and I'm, I don't want to give you consent. And I think that was their, the problem.
And and I think there really was a consent problem in that particular case. I'm not talking about the town right away trees, but there was a consent.
Con Ed admitted that, I mean, when they came to meetings, they said, they, they did it very poorly.
Yeah, they absolutely committed, they, they did it very poorly.
Should have done it and it was bad.
But we.
So what we can add to one twenty one dash four E at the end is while recognizing that it's permitted by right, we add, but notification should be provided to the town and property owner prior to removal of the tree.
That, that is our current policy.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
So that's not mandatory, you can't cite, but they don't, but it's put in.
Yeah.
But, but timeout, but but our policy in town is that now when Con Ed comes along and they, they do their storm hardening, anything other than
They work with you, yeah.
they are supposed to send letters out to property owners, they give, they, it's, they are supposed to give us a list, um, a copy of the letter, a listing of the work that they're doing, and they're supposed to come before the town board at a public meeting and explain themselves and then we give them, then, you know, prove to us that they have notified all the property owners regarding it.
That would be good if they did that, but I know that even after the storm hardening project, they were still working their way up Alparis Road and there was the truck taking down trees, they'd never spoken to me.
Joe, and for their routine line, line clearing.
And I actually had to say to them, excuse me.
They're not doing it. They're not.
But even the tree, is that trimming the, the branches or they're physically taking down the trees?
Physically taking down trees.
A combination of both of the tree, yeah, so my thinking is that they may feel that that, they would do that for storm hardening projects, but for routine line clearing and maintenance, I don't think they'd share that, so we probably should get clarified from them.
Okay. Okay.
Cause they're, they're not, currently not doing that.
And meanwhile, I have a whole bunch more trees I want them to take down.
All right, they're left with the notification.
They're pretty good guys these days, they don't wanna take.
I don't know what to say.
It's a pricey thing.
It's a lot about you.
It's just pricey, it's really expensive to take down trees.
It's very expensive.
And by the way, not to say it's any controversial, but it's true. You've said that multiple times. There, there are still, there are still people in the West End who think that those trees came down for the sunshine home and that caused a lot of controversy. So there's actually two issues at play.
For sunshine, yeah. And.
That's, it's, sorry, I got in trouble for uh, for finally doing the drainage on the, the Spring Valley group, that's amazing.
All right, what do we have to do next? I I have a ton of little things that I'll send to you tomorrow. I mean, you don't have to go through everything.
Oh, okay. I think one last, my one last question is substantial, what does that mean, substantial uh?
I don't know how you define it.
You have to define substantial, so I don't know what that means, you have to find the beginning of it.
Where's that?
In terms of the substantial damage or or how, and how, I've got the word exactly what the substantial.
I'm sorry, where, where are we?
Substantial, unhealthy, substantial damage, what was it? I I don't remember exactly what it was. Substantial impairment, substantial something. Related to the health of the tree. You know what I'm talking about, Steve, right?
I don't know what it is.
Yeah, but sometimes a tree looks nothing, but it actually very sick and contagious.
Creates actual, I don't know, maybe the property shall.
You had on capacitive tree, I mean.
Is it ever hazardous tree? It doesn't have. Significant, I'm sorry.
It doesn't say substantial.
It's significant, I, I'm sorry, it's significant, not substantial.
It was on the first page of Victoria's.
Yeah, what does significant mean? That's a probably, you gotta define that legally.
But I thought that's what we were taking out.
Okay, well. Did we take it up?
Yeah. Nick, it was in Victoria's, it's not in the.
Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, back then, yeah.
All right.
The other, other thing which I think is a great idea, but I don't see how, you know, they were asking us to, you know, when I review a permit, to go and get permission from all the neighbors around the property that, you know, it's a subject of a permit to look at it and view from the neighbors. I don't see that being practical at all.
No, I mean, you have a process by which there, that when the application is being submitted,
It's a trespassing issue, I mean, it's.
if it's within the regulated buffer zone, correct, the notification has to be sent out to all of the neighbors.
Yeah, for the tree.
All the neighbors at that time can contact you, learn more about what was in that. I mean, my only, I I, you know, I still have this little sort of burr in my side about the fact that it does seem, it does it sort of irks me a little bit that they don't get, that the neighbors don't get the notification when you've made a positive determination.
Well, it's done at the beginning, it, you know, that an application's been applied.
I know, I know, but just if they wish to appeal it, they have to do it with the town.
But then, it should have been, if you make that, if you make one at a time once, it powers them enough.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
Well, maybe, maybe the letter, the notes that get sent out, they should be told, you know, here's the number to follow up if you want to find out the status of a permit.
I mean, they go, they email Steve and say, please let me know when this happens.
Right.
It's a ten days.
Can we add one please?
That would be great.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so you have.
Electrical inspector law?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Ratchet, just trying to bang through some.
Thank you for, for my, for working, Nick, and.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah.
In terms of, in terms of process, are we gonna wait until after the next public hearing or change it before
Thank you, Steve.
the next public hearing?
Think you have to change it so we can get it out for that.
Yes.
So everybody has.
So we revise the pace on tonight's comments.
Yeah, the way people can get a, a documentary flexible ER, that they.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll.
Yeah.
So page thirty nine, you've got, you have a little memo from us summarizing the need for electrical inspector law. In essence, Westchester County now licenses all electrical inspectors, the town does not.
Mm-hmm.
So we're updating the law to be consistent with the county law. So takes the burden off of us. Yes, and we're just asking that electrical inspectors register with us, so we, not file any certification or license, but that we're, we're licensed. So we have a list.
Yes. Thanks. Thank you.
Take care, Steve.
Just, oh, by the way, Steve, before you go, if a neighbor's tree falls on my property.
I can answer that. That's no reason why we would not do that.
Yeah, agreed, and the, the county law also addresses the licensing of master electricians. Why are we only addressing the electrical inspections and not the ma- master electrician's piece?
Yeah, we're down, right?
Don't know if that's in a separate section of the code or, or we don't require.
No, can I go to my neighbor and say, you have to pay the town?
Let me look into it and get back to you, so I understand the question.
Just, just curious, we should be doing both of those times since they.
Yeah. Yeah.
I gotta do.
But isn't it in our podcast, Steve?
Maybe it's not in our code, maybe that's, maybe that's the, okay, but I, I.
Right. But it's a fair question, maybe we get it.
Okay, the travel reimbursement policy, I'm actually tabling, cause I didn't get a chance to revise it. Next is recreation transportation, it's just to award the, um, authorization to award a bid for the coach buses, it's for camp and senior trips. Okay, um, next is juice and technologies, it is before you, this is our three one one because they increase their rates and, um.
How much are they used actually? What are the stats on that?
Hmm, not as much as we would have liked, but it, it actually is used. It actually got tremendous amount of, tremendous, it got in a spike in use during our storms.
Of course.
It was another way, because not everybody had the ability to, you know, do code reds and everything else that was coming through, but the three one one, for whatever reason, they were able to get through.
And what people are doing is primarily reporting issues, right? So they're reporting, I've got a pothole on my street, I've, I mean, I still, I still would be interested to know what the stats are.
Mm-hmm. Sh- uh, trees and wires. Okay, I'll get you the stats on those.
Just general stats, I mean, if it's like fifty a year and we're paying, you know, however. Just general stats, I mean, if it's like fifty a year and we're paying, how, how much we're paying.
We're not getting fifty a year. Well, actually, I only get some of them. I get some of them.
We're getting five a year?
Oh, we better be getting fifty a year.
Where can, you don't think we're getting fifty a year?
We're paying eight thousand dollars for this.
Well, I don't get all them, so I don't know, I only get, I think, maybe the pothole ones.
Could you, could you ask them for a summary and some output report samples? I remember when they came in originally presented. But I'd just like to understand, because if it's like less than fifty, people will find a way to contact us anyways.
And the other thing to note is whether they're doing it through the mobile app or just through the website.
That's a good point.
Because it would be very easy for us to just build a form on the website that says, you know, I have an issue, I have a pothole issue, click here and it sends an email to DPW about your pothole issue. Versus, I think what we're paying for is the mobile app functionality.
I think what we're paying for is the actual tracking, which is making sure it's routed to the right department. And then it's res, then the resolution, and then a management report that, that's what they were selling, a management report that lets you know that.
Yeah, so it's not a whole analytic, which is something that we did not have on our website that Lyle was just instituted.
But it has a whole escalation, where after two, a certain type of incident, after two days, after three days, after four days.
But it may be a bigger solution than we actually need.
Yeah, it's, and then if, the goal was to, instead of DPW, you know, having a sticky, they put this in his box, that somebody called in a pothole, it's all tracked online, it's done, they're not doing that stuff.
And then they got a response back that we've resolved it.
But they still remain calling, they still want here.
They're still doing it.
They still may be calling DPW or sending an email and a sticker, and they still end up getting stolen.
They are.
No, they are, because what happens is, I mean, I don't know how many we get through Qcent, but I will say this, we get tons through pothole and my Newcastle.
Absolutely.
We got tons through storm damage.
Yeah.
People like the emails, and you make the email simple, and they can remember it, they send it out all the time.
So it may be a supersized solution for what we actually need.
How much does it cost to get?
Yeah, we're a small, we're a small town, we probably don't need it.
It's um.
It's not that much money, it's eight thousand dollars.
That's a lot of money, eight thousand bucks.
Well, it's um.
But it's a year, it wasn't a one-time charge, it's a term.
Yeah. Or, you know, eight thousand bucks is still a lot of money for like three or four or ten or fifteen.
Right, but this is why I think, once we update the website, we should hope to.
Well, that's why I'm concerned. Until we update the website and we have something that's integrated, something where somebody can actually use their mobile app to take and report things, I would be reluctant to, to, to pull this.
I'm not, I just think that we need to like look at the rationale, and if it doesn't do more than what it's doing now, that's why I look at the stats. It's, it's, if it's not being used and we're paying for it. So either it has to come up with a way that it's going to be used more effectively, so the DPW can enter their pothole complaints from phone calls into it off the computer and use it as a tracking system. I mean, there's other ways to make it more valuable and get more out of it.
You know, I just hate to.
And there might be other things.
It's not a, it's not a, yeah.
There might, there might be other levels of service that we can get, I mean, if we're spending eight thousand dollars a year, but we may be only, at this point, using the functionality, then maybe there's a service plan that's
Lower.
a thousand dollars a year or something. Like, we're not using it, it shouldn't, you know, it's one thing to set it up and pay eight thousand dollars, but now we're not getting eight thousand dollars worth of support, or whatever they're doing for it.
No.
No.
And, I mean, if you look at it this way, if we get fifty calls and you get a hundred people using it, that's five thousand dollars, so five.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, to get my point, I mean, could you pay a five hundred dollar for a customer service call?
I get your point.
Just these two pages.
I mean, you think about Facebook, if you add it up, all the, if if everybody complains on Facebook, uses pothole, uses storm damage, and if they use that mobile app instead, it would actually be getting a money's worth. But in this day and age, they're just not doing that.
They just tag Rob Greenstein on Facebook.
It's the quickest way to get a pothole.
I should get it.
Yes, you should get the eight thousand dollars. Okay, so let me get some answers from Qcent, okay? Next, noise ordinance waiver, Mount Kisko Country Club is having a, um, this is this band.
A concert.
Outdoor concert.
Seventy-five. Yeah. And so they do it when they have fireworks as well, so we ask them to just sort of mimic the same thing, it's for the one night.
We've had, we've had, I'm only bringing this up not for this. We've, we've got, it's me and Joe, you knew, we've got some emails from neighbors. Not from whenever they ask for permission, like for this one, the neighbors aren't going to complain about this, and the neighbors aren't going to.
They might.
Well, they might, but in the emails that we've gotten, they actually say, no, but I think Mount Kisko Country Club too, is when they have, when they have a fair sometimes and they have bands. We've gotten complaints from neighbors. They say, we have no problem when they do the fireworks show, we have no problem when they do like special events. It's that sometimes when they have these bands at these parties, it's.
Wedding.
I think that everyone knows that they do the Fourth of July, so nobody cares. I don't think people know about the outdoor rock concert. So I would consider contacting the head of the board, Jill.
I'm sorry, so they did.
Well, they should notify the neighbors.
They did it last year, they did it in fourteen, and I think they may have done it in fifteen.
Jill. I would consider, I think you should contact the head of the board at, of Lawrence Arms East, who is Alex Shapiro, who interviewed.
Alex Shapiro, yes.
And just tell him about this before they.
Why don't we just make them, tell them that it's, it's, it's fine, but it's, they have to notify the surrounding homeowners associations.
By a certain time in advance.
And will we do that going forward for all of these? Because.
You should.
Well, no, it depends how many they want to have a year, I mean, if it's one a month, it would really bug me. If I were. Because it's still eleven, like, forget, it's eleven thirty, I know it.
Well, especially the kids, because they're little kids.
You've got a young kid, yeah.
But they should, they should, they should notify them, I bet they do. They're ready.
I don't think they have.
Um, so you know what they, we can do the resolution, let's, let me speak to Alex Shapiro in the interim.
Considering my neighborhood, I'm pretty sure they have.
And if everything's fine with them, it's okay, otherwise, we'll talk to the board before, next time, before we get permission.
If you guys get an invite.
Okay, Westchester snow and ice agreement is such an update, giving us money to reimburse them. Yes. Yay. We love when the county and state give us money for that.
Right, if they don't take anything out of us, it's all totally money coming to us.
Well, we've, we've expended all the manpower to take the.
We'll give you five dollars, but take twelve.
Uh, the next is DNR Laboratories, which is just a really unfortunate acronym for.
For you.
They do it on purpose, I don't know. So, NCCMC paid to have sound, the sound system installed in the Chapakua Performing Arts Center, and this is the ongoing service contract to make sure that everything is okay and taken care of, and this is.
Why is that for twenty seventeen eighteen?
Because they're gonna, it actually expired back in November, and we thought it had been renewed already, but it was not. So we were, they have already gone and serviced some of the clinic that's over there. And so they will retroactively include it in this, under this contract for us.
Can I face this? Oh, five thousand dollars.
They gotta change their name.
Yeah, and the only thing is, is that we, yeah.
I think it's funny. Two guys sitting, look onto this business.
It's, yeah. And Chappaqua Millwood Chamber of Commerce pledged to support.
But that, I could, I could speak to that for a little bit. So last year, we, they asked us for money for.
The faces campaign.
The face, local faces, which we retroactively approved, and they also asked for money for something else, I don't remember. So this year, what they're thinking is, let's just get, ask for two thousand dollars in advance, right, I think it's two thousand, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, two thousand.
And, and then we'll just fully plan on using it for it. And.
So they have the money upfront, so they can do stuff, yes.
But what I've been speaking to them, I just want to add one little quick thing, I mean, I've been speaking to, you know, when we talked about that thing with the website, you know, this, I mean, personally, I think we need to, we should try to do, and I think everybody agrees, we should try to do as much for the, for the merchants as we legally can. And, you know, while some of them say, you know, can you give, you know, can you give me tax abeyments, and can you give me mitigation money? The fact is, we, we can't, but things we can do are things like this, and if, if they want, they would, some of the merchants were talking about, you know, trying to create a website to, you know, live, eat, shop, love downtown Chappaqua, and they were gonna ask for money for that. Whether we do that, that remains to be seen, but, but the taxi stand, which we can talk about, but the fact is, I mean, this is, this is a, a, a way that we're allowed to help the merchants.
I don't, I don't disagree, but the only caveat that I have is, I'm not a fan of a blank check.
Yes.
To say, here you go, I don't even necessarily oversee every, everything you do, but we should have an idea of what they want to do.
I think they have it in the letter, though.
Uh, and what they're going to do, but it should be earmarked.
Page ninety-five.
No, but it should be.
Says wine around town events, summer concerts.
Right.
It should be.
It says it is.
It should be earmarked specifically, because they're just, these are the things that we want to do. What's, nothing is locked, nothing is mandated that they do that. I'm sure they will, but I think in terms of precedent going forward, if someone else asks us for money and say, hey, this is kind of thing you just want to do, and you want, and we'll go, oh, here you go. But if they say, hey, we're gonna earmark this wine around town, we're gonna earmark this specific for this, then we can give them.
I mean, frankly, I love supporting them for wine around town, all the things we're.
Hundred percent, a hundred percent.
I don't necessarily need to support them for their monthly networking events with each other.
I know.
But they have fees, they have dues for that, like, I don't need to pay for that.
I agree.
Or their social media promotion, their meetings, I don't need to pay for that, but I'm happy to pay for events around town, because it brings people more downtown and supports the merchants.
It's not the two thousand dollars per cent, that's, that's no issue, it just needs to be earmarked for somebody specific.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, and I don't, I don't have an issue with two thousand dollars. In fact, if anything, I think we ought to go back to them and encourage them to be more creative in their proposal to us.
I agree.
Sure.
And set them up with the potential of, of more money.
Absolutely, I have no problem with that.
We have one point five million dollars coming from Summit Greenfield, we need to have the conversation about how that money is going to be spent. But, you know, one way, and, you know, it does, it certainly wouldn't take one point five million dollars, it'd take a very, very smaller slice of that, but would be for them to come up with, you know, a targeted marketing campaign around the revitalization of downtown, set to coincide with the end date of our downtown infrastructure project. So a whole campaign around that, a series of events around that.
Right, right.
If they could pull something together like that, I think we could put more than two thousand dollars into it.
I agree a hundred percent, and by the way, that was, that was, that was raised at that breakfast, and I agree a hundred percent, but,
And then I. It's a great idea.
But the thing is also that, quite honestly, with this two thousand dollars that they're talking about is, I mean, listen, if, I mean, Nick, you could probably speak to this too, I mean, having B to B meetings is not, I don't think that's necessarily a legitimate purpose.
No, no, no.
No, it's not. And, and Jill, just to build on Ike's idea.
Right, we said.
Right, so we know that the Millwood two hundred was super successful.
Fabulous.
So my feeling is, going back to the same thing, that I think maybe if Ike were.
Ike is doing summer concerts, right, he's gonna do the summer.
He's doing the summer concerts, but that's something that's always sort of done, and one of the things that I actually, not the way Ike's doing it, but one of the things that I actually think, and I, and maybe this needs to be a challenge to Ike, but when people are sitting over by the gazebo on the ball field, you know, at the end of the day, you know, so on and so forth, it's not necessarily sort of dragging people into where the shopping district is. It's a little bit more like a little sort of event silo. And I think that maybe if Ike was given the idea to work maybe with the chamber, but to maybe scatter, you know, to work with something that could end up actually dragging people closer to, whether it's the new plaza in front of the Historical Society, or something in front of whatever, maybe he can come with things that will give more people a reason, targeting that pivotal point, which is the Thanksgiving through Christmas, or right before Thanksgiving to Christmas holiday season.
Like margarita trucks in town.
Well, Ike would, we could, we could do that in two.
There you go. I'd come every week. I would.
We could do that in two seconds, but you know, it's, it's, yeah, there's not, not a merchant, not a merchant free.
The merchant.
And the ball field.
The fact, the fact is, there's people with the chamber, or some people who actually aren't with the chamber, who would love to help out with what Ike is suggesting. And Ike is great, don't get me wrong, he could definitely do that, I've talked to him about events, the downtown food truck event, and we should definitely have that. But, and by the way, the summer concerts are gonna have food trucks, and they're gonna have beer, and they're gonna have wine, and it's gonna be great. But that's a different thing, and having something that rediscovered Chappaqua when the streetscape is unveiled.
Right.
And, and, you know, that's, but that could be the first, right, that could be something with food trucks too, but then the restaurants, you know.
And that's sort of.
That should be a big event, like the Millwood two hundred type event.
Slide King, Slide Chappaqua.
Yeah, still love that, I love that idea.
We have to be careful of that, because then you're competing with the restaurants when you do the food trucks.
Slide City, oh, it'd be awesome.
Yeah.
I know, the food.
And just in terms of these dollars, it, it can't just be for like the, the, their own marketing meetings, it needs to be something that promotes the town, which.
Right, yeah, that should be.
Right, so, the bottom line is, we need, I think we need to have it earmarked.
Right, so, but they know.
We need to have a more detailed proposal from them.
Right, and the reality is, is that wine around town, the summer concerts, and the cookie scavenger hunts have already been done, so that they know what their budgets are for that. So I'm sure that they can come up and, you know, itemize for us and come up with two thousand dollars for those three things, and make them a little bit more substantial than they've been in the past with a budget.
Cookie scavenger hunt, when did they do that, they did it on, I missed it.
Sir.
Well, how it was, no, it wasn't Easter, it was, uh.
Every Tuesday.
Yeah, I thought it was every Tuesday.
No, two at a time.
We caught two in the corner with a whole load of cookies, like.
Ike keeps approaching all the stores, I want more.
It was around Halloween, it was, I forgot what it was.
That's okay, but, but, okay, will you talk to them, that's a problem, yeah.
All right. Slide the city, hollow.
We should, we should.
That was a, I love that.
If you add them up, it's a great, if you call them up, you got a price, right?
Yes, that's what it's about.
Yeah, I'm gonna talk about that.
Yeah, because they were trying to.
Um, what is it down there still?
We've missed it. No way, we're doing it down King Street, and it's gonna be out of control.
That was a big success, actually, their cookie.
Well, then, we, we need to get one, we need to get.
With beer trucks, wine trucks.
We're staying in the line, we're all just.
I don't care.
It's this really fun slide that you can put on the soup of the hill, and everyone can just go down.
You should just slide down.
Then you did like a slip and slider?
It's like a giant, like wider than this, a slide down.
A giant slip and slide, it's wet.
Yes, it's wet.
It looks super fun.
With wine trucks and beer trucks and food trucks.
Super fun.
I guarantee they would, I guarantee they wouldn't allow it on the hill, to be honest with you. I think it's a great idea, we should.
Wear helmets, Rob, okay?
Do it again.
I mean, come on. They like, they like that. Yeah, we'll put a fence up too. Got a bumper sticker.
Payment of claims?
Committee.
All right, with that payment of claims, I, I move to approve the payment of claims and the amount of charges, two thousand nine hundred seventy-one dollars forty-five cents. Listen, the summary pre-check write-up report and detailed vouchers, detailed report, each prepared, pardon me, each prepared on May first, two thousand eighteen. Checks will be issued and mailed to each claimant listed on Wednesday, May second, two thousand eighteen.
All in favor?
Aye, I move to award the bid for the coach bus transportation services to White Plains Bus Company. DBA suburban charters, appeal box eight two three C, Fort Worth, Fisher Lane, White Plains, New York. In accordance with the cost per bus bid sheet submitted and attached here too.
All in favor, aye.
And the last administrative item is that we have some minutes, and also, there's gonna be a resolution on next agenda. Bob's attending, we'd like to attend a conference, it's a big conference. Something infiltration, water infiltration, on stormwater infiltration, I'm like, no.
Yeah, it's a stormwater.
Effective stormwater infiltration.
Utica?
No, it's local, it's in Naukau. I know, right?
Back, back to the chamber thing, before we adjourn, back to the chamber.
No, and we're not adjourned, because we have some other.
I know, we have the executive session, but before we adjourn this.
We do?
Yes.
Yeah, we have, um, what I was gonna say is, what I, what Ivy mentioned, so the chamber has been talking to me about trying to put together like a little website, well, no, no, I'm sorry, let me backtrack, the chamber has not been talking about the website. Some other people have been talking about the website, we tried to actually figure, okay, let's, let's do what the chambers redesign and work with them on it, but their redesign is like almost a finished product, and it's B to B, and it's. So it, it may be a good idea that we say, in anticipation of this rediscovered Chappaqua, whatever you call it, it come, you know, they could start working on a website now, that basically, you know, could serve, could serve as a platform for it. And it could promote some of the merchants now, and then it could be used as the base, as a, you know, the sort of what they're building up for, for this event.
Platform.
Because what they really want something right now is something online to help promote downtown Chappaqua. And quite honestly, with, with the website that's gonna be coming out from the chamber, from what I've saw, is not gonna solve that at all.
It's not gonna solve it, why?
Because the website is more like, it has a calendar events, it has, it has, you know, member directory, calendar events about us, mission.
It's boring.
It's not, it's not like that we saw up there, but in a cold, cold spring.
Well, it's not a film.
Well, maybe, maybe.
Why don't they do it like that? Maybe they could work with Lyle or somebody to try and get something.
They already signed, currently, they already signed a contract, it's almost a finished product, I think it's, whatever. I think, as much as it would have been nice to, sort of, redesign that, I think it's too, everything, we found out about everything too late. Um, I think that, so there's people who wanted, like Dana Burke has volunteered to do it, she actually creates websites. Tara Micalay, who's incredibly creative, wants to help. I'm sure we can get, you know, Alyssa from Kings tribe, and Susan from Reeves. Laura from Scattered Books to help. They need, you know, the more that we can do to help them, and if they can create a website for a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars.
It needs to, it definitely. The chamber one, actually, it almost feels to a certain extent, like, the chamber one is bigger than just the downtown annul it, right?
And it's not Chappaqua.
Right, it definitely is.
And so, but I know, but it's, but it's bigger, and it's ancillary businesses that maybe you might not see and touch.
It's professionals, professionals.
Right, yeah. Professionals as well.
And by the way, chambers dominate about the professionals, not so much the retailers.
Right, and I'm almost thinking that maybe as part, maybe we can use up, we can invest in the unveiling in a website. But not for the chamber. No, but just talking about, not for the chamber, I'm saying we can invest, which is our upgraded downtown, and we can introduce the merchants, and we can do so on and so forth, what you can discover. I don't think it necessarily has to be associated, if our goal is to support the, um, the, the.
Merchants to retailers.
The retailers and to introduce the residents, reintroduce the residents to the retailers at a critical time. I think that's something that could fall within our purview and we could public spending of money, because it's all about the downtown and property values and.
Right.
I think I'd be open to spending money.
Right, it wouldn't necessarily be through the chamber, it would be through this, these people who want to work on this rediscover to tie the thing, but
Yeah.
The website.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, good.
So.
Or we would have to do it per se.
Are you gonna have to work with someone on that? Are you going to start working with someone on that?
I don't know what that is yet.
To rediscover. Why didn't you put her in charge? Because she came up with the idea.
Well.
There are, there are people who are, there are people who already want to work on it, there are people who already reached out to me, and Ivy can certainly work with them, and I'm gonna plan on working with them, but there's already people that have, you know, came forward with the idea to build a site to basically drive people to the town and show people how great the town is, and then we talked about that breakfast, that, you know, it would be great to have like you know, a rediscover campaign at that time. So, you know, we can just tie those two together. But um, I mean, that did come out of the chamber.
It's not that much time, it's April, May.
Doesn't take a long time to throw a website together and to start planning events.
No, but to kind of create a bigger gestalt takes a little bit of time. He's gonna be fun of me. Okay.
So then I'll I'll ask them to put together a proposal, and we'll, we'll have the chamber come back with some more specifics about their money, but then we'll have these other people come to us and say, hey, you can work with the town board.
Yeah.
And and we will use it as a way to, it's not the chamber, but it's it's to uh as a mitigation for the streetscape and the to uh kickoff the sort of a brand, branding thing for downtown.
Alright, so we.
Alright, speaking about streetscaping stuff, um what I, um Bob Seeley was finally able to get some uh hard numbers for the, the difference between the cost of the decorative uh traffic light and the original galvanized one.
Did you guys see the picture? Do you have a picture?
Um, I actually do not have one with me.
The picture was, we could circulate again, the picture was initially circulated, and then we were, but the far we can circulate again.
I don't remember.
Then it's, we're not gonna approve it tonight, I just want to let you guys know.
We were, we didn't understand the cost, whether it was, it was any, it would result in increased cost on that.
It's black and it's fluted, and it's gonna.
Yeah, I just love this, and is DOT approved?
The material costs are more.
Hmm?
DOT approved?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, those are the people.
Yeah, I just sent a picture around, I mean, it's very prominent, and and does it actually going to, the picture gonna actually demonstrate the configuration of the lighting, like
Yes.
the lighting configuration at the intersection?
As opposed to just a standard.
No, it's only, it's hmm.
No, it's gotta be two lights, two light.
It is. Yes, no, 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 it, yes, it does, it does show that, the picture does show, it's a, it's very nice, it's a black and it's fluted, it comes up with an arm
At least.
that's long enough for two heads.
But it, doesn't it need four heads?
Yes, it's got it.
Alright, so just to say, yeah, so if you could just give the picture that and help with it.
Yes, I will do that, um and the fluting is going to match the decorative light posts that are going around town.
And the.
Can you say that again?
I wish.
The picture, the picture though, fluted a a light, if I remember, a light on top, which we're not gonna have.
Decorative light.
I vaguely remember.
Yeah, no, 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 we found one without the light on top.
Because it doesn't match. Okay, right.
Yeah, we didn't, we want the light, it's too tall, we didn't, we didn't like it.
I remember those one section.
Does that light wouldn't match it?
But it's still fluted though, right?
Yes. We're keeping it.
I'm not going near that.
Do you like the fluting? No, you don't like, okay. Alright, so um we just have a couple more things for executive session and.
Motion to go, motion to adjourn the public meeting, motion to go on the executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.